Welcome everyone, I'll call this June 10th, 2025 meeting of Council to order at 4:30 PM. This meeting will be held in a hybrid manner where members of Council, staff and the public can participate electronically. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded and will be available on the township website. Notice is hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001 and in accordance with Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, that all information obtained is considered part of the public record. All rules apply to the meeting as if everyone was attending in person and if there is a problem with the technology impacting the proceedings of a meeting, the meeting may be recessed. So we'd ask anyone who can to rise for the playing of the National Anthem. We acknowledge that we are being hosted on the ancestral lands of the Haudenosaunee, Mississauga and Omaa-Winnee people. We acknowledge and welcome the presence of all indigenous peoples, including the Métis, Inuit and other First Nations from across this vast land who also makes this place home. The lands we are on today are recognized in the Two-Roe Wampanoag Dish with One Spoon Treaty, Treaty 27 and the Crawford Purchase. Okay, so the first item up is the confirmation of the agenda. Could I have a mover? Uh, move that, Councillor Willis. Do you mind reading it?
I move that the agenda of the June 10th, 2025 meeting of Council be confirmed as circulated.
So moved, seconded by Councillor Parks. All in favor, motion is carried. Any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof for open session this evening? Being none, we would entertain a motion to go into closed session if someone would present that. Councillor Ennis.
Move that Council now move into closed session to consider labor relations or employee negotiations, IAFF collective agreement negotiations pursuant to Section 2392D of the Municipal Act.
We actually started our council meeting.
Okay, welcome everyone. We actually started our council meeting at four thirty this eve- this evening. We've been in closed session and just dealt with some matters in closed session and now we're just reconvening to continue with open. So I will provide a rise and report that council received information regarding labor relations or employee negotiations, IAFF collective agreement negotiations pursuant to section two, three, nine, two D of the municipal act. So that brings us to presentations. So we have Jones, our community appointee on the East Lennox and Addington OPP detachment board, who will be coming in virtually to be able to provide a presentation on the board. And while she's coming in, I'll just mention that councillor Boudrick was planning on signing in virtually. There's being some, being some challenges there. If he does, is successful during the meeting, he will come in. Otherwise, it will be the rest of us and we have plenty for quorum, so we will carry on. Welcome, Jessica. Can you hear me okay?
I can. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful.
So while you were signing in, I just provided your name and you're with the, with the police board, detachment board. So if you're ready, you can carry on with your presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Hello, council and attendees. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to attend and present you with the East Lennox and Addington OPP detachment boards twenty twenty four board report. Just want to ensure all members have that report in front of them to follow along.
Yes, we do.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Just as a small introduction, my name's Jessica Jones and I'm the community appointed representative for Loyalist in Greater Napanee for the East Lennox and Addington OPP detachment board. I've resided in and been fortunate enough and proud to call back home since twenty twelve and excited to be a part of this board as that representative. I apologize for my virtual appearance. Childcare and sometimes life gets in the way, but I am excited to be here, albeit virtually. I also have a message from our board chair, Bob Norrie, who was not able to attend but did want to send along this message. Mayor and council, I apologize for being unavailable to attend with Jessica. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you and your full for your full cooperation and support of the new OPP police board. I have just returned from a conference for all of Ontario's police service boards and learned that due to support and allowing Anne to be our secretary treasury, we are miles ahead of the majority of our newly formed OPP boards. Jessica is one of our citizen volunteers who has stepped up to the task and I hope you enjoy her presentation. Thank you again, Bob Norrie. Okay, so with that being said, just as a small way of background, on April first, twenty twenty four, the Police Services Act, which you may be more familiar with, was replaced by the new Community Safety, Safety and Policing Act. In the midst of a few hundred new sections spearheaded by the Inspectorate of Policing, there was the implementation of the OPP detachment boards. These boards have been put in place essentially to concentrate on transparency, accountability and communication between the municipalities and the provincial police force that services our areas. I'm going to go over the report provided just in the sections that they've been done and just kind of inquire at each section if there are any questions relating to that specific section, just so nobody gets left behind on, on a question or anything they might want more clarification on, if that's okay. So before I begin, I did just want to acknowledge, and as I'm sure some of you noticed, there was a portion of the report that was missing. That's to be provided by the OPP. Unfortunately, it's not yet made its way to us in a formal way so that it can be presented tonight. I can advise that Inspector Tovel did produce that portion of the report and provided somewhat of a fulsome example of it at our last board meeting. But of course, it's not kind of yet made its way to the higher arching powers that be for approval. So we have every intention of providing it to the council once we have it and we really appreciate given how new this all is to the board and the OPP as well, all the patience and grace. Okay, so we will start the report on page two. And here we have our introduction, which includes the actual mandate. So the East Lennox and Addington OPP detachment board provides guidance and advice to the Ontario Provincial Police Detachment Commander regarding policing services to communities of Addington Highlands Township, Town of Greater Napanee, Loyalist Township and Stone Mills Township. In the context of that Community Safety and Policing Act, the detachment board works alongside and collaboratively with the detachment commander just to make sure that strategic priorities and initiatives of the OPP reflect the goals of our communities and our, you know, our desire for safety and that transparency and accountability from the police that service us. The board's guidance is critical in navigating the evolving landscape of policing regulations and fostering positive relationships between the OPP and our communities. Reporting requirements, as per section sixty eight sub one of that Community Safety and Policing Act, it does outline that an annual report is required and states that the OPP detachment board shall on or before June thirtieth in each year, provide an annual report to the municipalities and band councils regarding the policing provided by the detachment in their municipalities or First Nation reserves. This report has been prepared to satisfy the requirement of that act. Of course, as I previously mentioned, unfortunately, we are missing that one component that makes it fulsome. But again, you know, we're here to provide to you what the board itself has been up to and how we will make the accountability for that portion of the OPP's report. Is there any questions about the mandate or those reporting requirements?
Council, any questions at this time? Being none, please proceed.
Thank you. I'm following along to page three. The twenty twenty four board activities. So our board kind of came into fruition fully in June of twenty twenty four, which, you know, automatically kind of eliminates half the year automatically. But you know, as our chair Bob Norrie did mention, we are quite ahead of other boards in that we've moved quite quickly through the things that we need to do to get up to speed. With that being said, that board breakup and the governance is composed of one elected official from each of the four municipalities, one to jointly represent the communities of Addington Highlands Township and Stone Mills Township, and one to jointly represent the communities of Greater Napanee and Loyalist Township. There will also be one member that's appointed by the minister through the public appointment secretariat. We don't know when that's to come about. I'm sure it's, it's in the works, but we haven't been available to a timeline on that. But we can expect an additional member to our board in the near future. The current members of your board went through a recruitment process in June of twenty twenty four with the following six members appointed. For Addington Highlands Council Representative, we have Reeve Henry-Hogg. For Greater Napanee Council Representative, councillor Bob Norrie, who is our, our chair. We have Loyalist Council Representative, Mayor Jim Hagedorn. Stone Mills Council Representative, councillor Sherry Milligan. Addington Highlands and Stone Mills Community Appointee, Tina Marie Chamberlain. And of course, myself, the Loyalist in Greater Napanee Community Appointee. And of course, once again, our provincial appointee to be determined. Does anyone have any questions on the governance or the current elected members of the East Lennox and Addington detachment board?
Council, any questions at this time? Being none, please proceed.
Thank you. Board bylaws and policies at the beginning of page four. So the following bylaws were established by the board in twenty twenty four at our first meeting in November. So first would be the bylaw to actually name the detachment board to give it significance amongst the other boards. So that bylaw was passed to name at the East Lennox and Addington OPP detachment board. And that will be, would it be referred to in the future? At this time, we are developing a procedural bylaw. It's a bylaw just essentially to govern the conduct, the duties and responsibilities of our members and the calling of meetings. So there are a few things still have to work out in regards to that, but it's we are in the process. The following policies were established by the board to date. So we have the abuse, discrimination and harassment and violence policy as well as our remuneration policy. Any questions about, about that part of the report?
Council, any questions? No, please proceed.
Thank you. Involved in the appointment of the members of the board, there was training. So the following prescribed training modules were completed by all six appointed members and the board's secretary treasurer. The training modules were developed by the Ministry of the Solicitor General for the purpose of meeting section thirty five sub two of the Community Safety and Policing Act. The areas in which we were trained in were police governance, policing in Ontario, roles and responsibilities of OPP detachment boards, board member appointments, training requirements, code of conduct and conflict of interest. So they were modules that we all had to complete before our appointment could be secured and we had to illustrate how we met those requirements to ensure we were capable and prepared to serve on that board. Meetings. So we did hold our inaugural meeting on November fourteenth, twenty twenty four. And we did have a following one, January twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, April twenty four, twenty twenty five. And I'm sure you can see that the pattern is a, you know, every, every three months essentially, unless another meeting is called. All of those meeting records are available, the link that we provided in the report. So if there's, you know, anything later on that in this report that you'd like to get a little more foundation on, can attend there and see everything that's kind of transpired at those meetings. We agreed to rotate the location of the meetings, just given that it doesn't encompass all the different municipalities and members coming from different places. So that, that is something that was discussed on November fourteenth for our board. Board support. So we receive staff support from Loyalist Township Municipal Clerk. We have Anne and Gillian, who I can say for myself have been extremely helpful in, in the onboarding process for this board and, and this report itself. So we do receive support from them to allow us to operate, again, as board mentioned, so efficiently. The board budget. So section seventy one of the act does require the board to prepare estimates of the total amount that will be required to pay the expenses of our operation. Other than the remuneration of board members, the act does require the board to submit those estimates to every municipality that receives policing from the OPP and in relation to the, the specific detachment board, along with the statement of the municipality's share of the cost. So each municipality in the area for which our board is responsible shall pay to the OPP detachment board an equal share of the amount set out in the board's estimates, unless otherwise unanimously agreed upon. At our meeting held on November fourteenth, twenty twenty four, the board did approve the twenty twenty five budget and a copy of which it should be attached as appendix A in your report. And that's just to allow you guys to incorporate that into your municipal budgets. Is there any questions on the support or the budget?
Council. Yes. Any questions on that portion or any, any portion of the report? Including the budget. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Through your worship to Ms. Jones, just, just for the benefit of the viewing public. So what, what are the appropriate mechanisms for members of the public to help you contribute to your work in giving guidance and advice to the detachment commander?
Absolutely. So I know this is something that we are working through the appropriate chain. We've had discussions about municipal specific emails and stuff to reach out to the board. As of right now, via the Inspectorate of Policing, any actual, I just want to start with any actual complaint or issue that would be above the board's ability to handle should of course go through the proper change inspector of policing. In regards to reaching out to us as something that they think that we could assist with in representing them when we meet with the detachment commander or Inspector Tovel. I would say the best bet would be probably to reach out to our clerk to filter that down through us. I apologize. I, I'm not sure we've actually a hundred percent solidified that process yet, but that is something that we could reach out to each council once we know the best way to go about that. So you can communicate that to members and I can't speak for everyone, but for myself in my area, always happy to hear what anyone has to say and, and any feedback they have. I think the whole purpose of that board is to create that open line of communication. So we, we, I, I can make sure I make a point of, of getting something from our clerk out to the council in regards to the best line of communication. But again, right now, I think anything going through the clerk is probably, probably the best bet.
And I'll just chime in on that one as well. I think you answered it very well. At this point, I think everybody's still kind of getting our feet wet on the committee as well. And I think everything goes through the clerk. That would be the best. She shares information regularly with us. And as was touched on, due to the confidentiality and not wanting anyone's personal devices to be ever, ever be called into any kind of investigation. We did discuss that since Loyalist is, our clerk is the administrative staff for it or the clerk's office, then we are looking at providing Loyalist email accounts to all members, even if they have other municipal accounts, simply so that all the policing information can all be used within the controlled setting of the Loyalist email system, along with all the securities as well. That way, I mean, I already have one, but especially our, our citizen members, we didn't want to put them in a situation where their personal devices could be called in if there was ever a concern or a complaint. And so this is, and this also provides all of the securities, which is extremely important in this case as well. So thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Being none, thank you, Jessica, for bringing this report forward and actually, it didn't take her long to put her hand up and say, I, I'm okay with doing the present presenting. So she's presenting to all of the municipalities. She already did share, there's been a lot of changes with the new legislation, newly formed board. Of course, members that had to do all the training. I will say the inspector- I will say the inspector, Inspector Tovell has been excellent to work with. Any of you that know him know that he's a very approachable person and and very, very knowledgeable. And he's helped. He's helped us mold into a good committee, I believe. He's also, it's also been very educational. And as Jessica mentioned, our clerk's department has done an excellent job at, as you can see, there's already bylaws passed and we're advancing quite quickly, making sure the governance is all well established. And it's nice to hear that we were at the leader of the pack at the provincial level as well, which I'm not, I'm not shocked considering the the ones that we're working with. And then just as was mentioned, we decided the meetings are in virtual, are in person with virtual option. So it does make it accessible to everyone if they can't make it. And it is kind of nice to rotate around the different municipalities. For one thing, that's means that like, otherwise, there may be one person that has to drive two hours to every single meeting. So we can all share in that. And also, it's good to see the entire area as well to know what or what the detachment's working with. So, so that's good. So if there's no further questions, we would just entertain a motion to receive. Counsel Pradrick, so moved, seconded by Counsel Willis. Any final comments? Seeing none, call the question. In favor, motion is passed. Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate you bringing it forward.
Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, good. So we do have another presentation this evening. Anna Lee Adair from Evoque Consulting. And it comes. Did you, did you want to introduce her? Did you want? Yep, please.
Okay, good evening, counsel. Thank you for having us. So through your worship, I'm excited to be here this evening to introduce Anna Lee Adair from Evoque Culture two point O. Evoque is a forward-thinking consulting collective dedicated to advancing arts and culture throughout Canada. With over thirty years of experience, Anna Lee and her team are very excited to join Loyalist Township to create an innovative and strategic arts, culture and heritage master plan for the community. So Anna Lee is here this evening to introduce the plan and provide some exciting information and details that we have scheduled for the summer. So I'll pass it over to Anna Lee.
Hey, thank you, your worship and members of council. Yeah, we're thrilled to have this opportunity to work with you and your staff and your communities in Loyalist and we, just to give you an outline of, you know, what I'll go over tonight, try to keep it short and brief. Just a little bit of a context and what the deliverables are for this plan. Introduce our team to you. We all aren't here, just I'm representing the team. Talk about the current state a little bit and then what we wanted, you know, what we want to achieve. It's a very short timeline. So we'll, this is the team. And myself and Terry Lynn are local. I live outside of Gannock. Terry Lynn's on Wolf Island. Justine and Bridget are in Toronto and Patricia is in Vancouver. And we're a collective as opposed to a firm, so we work very much. We try to bring in the experts that are needed on each project and we try to, as much as possible, form that team in particular to the strengths of who we have in our network. So Bridget is an event specialist and, you know, and Patricia's museum strategy. Terry's a indigenous. So she'll be taking those conversations to the indigenous community around here. Justine's around accessibility and planning and myself around engagement and a long history of working for different municipalities in arts, culture and heritage. So yeah, we're, and we also have engaged a local artist team as part of our methodology. So we've engaged one artist and we'll be bringing along some young emerging artists as well to help us with engagement and events on the ground this, over the summer. So for us, we're trying to get a feeling, we call this kind of stage a listening and learning phase, which we'll be doing from pretty much from May until September, so a long period of engagement. And help to bring the perspective of the community into this plan. And deliver what we see as these deliverables that were in the RFP around the various strategies that you're requiring to move forward in the plan over ten years. So an events enhancement strategy, a museum, an art strategy, volunteer strategy. And we're really clear in terms of implementation roadmap, along with a measurement, monitoring and evaluation framework and learning framework. We try to do KPIs, probably is your language. We use progress indicators and outcome indicators. So we try very much to make this a practical plan that you can implement and not just a visionary plan, but an actual like on the ground, how do we implement this over the phases? Looking at probably three phases in this way. How do we set this up? How do we do the next three years and the next three years so that we are, we have some kind of span? Obviously, a policy and aspirational vision to go along with that. But as much as possible, looking at the timeline, as much as possible, we start with the indigenous community in terms of listening and learning, in terms of that layer, the community layer. And we will be starting that heavily in June, having Idea Labs, the twenty third to twenty seventh of June with various groups, heritage, business and tourism, arts, museum and volunteers, staff, young people. We're at Ernest Town School on Thursday. We were at the seniors expo last week, trying to tack on our engagement to already existing events, Canada Day, the concert series, the markets. And so the artist team here will do some of that as well and and look at those networks. So trying to spread our engagement as far and as as possible. The focus areas for us right now, what we're looking at is where you're at now and where, where we, where we are now and framing that current context. So there's been a lot of activity. This team is pretty incredible. They've done an incredible job of the events and the heritage facilities activations. I mean, the number of people that are coming out to events, I'm not sure how the capacity is how they're going to keep up the capacity in terms of the resources. But really great numbers in terms of people who are interested in in all the events and all the work and programming that this team has been doing over the last little bit around the, you know, looking at more of the grassroots arts activities that are mainly done either solo by artists or in small groups. There's, you know, the the galleries and networks there in Amherst Island. And, you know, primarily looking at a volunteer strategy for you that acknowledges as well the milestones and the leaders that have actually been in this community and made this work so far up until this date. So how do we move that and leverage the knowledge of the people who have been leading this charge for a long time? Looking at the admin services in terms of, this is a fairly new division. And certainly, as I was saying, the community awareness of what's going on is building. You've got a lot of new families moving in. You got a lot of new development. You also have a large seniors population. So there's a lot of variety in the communities that we're seeing and how you're working with each of these partners that you're, that you're working with. And how it's governed. I mean, how is arts, culture and heritage governed right now? And what is the community voice on that and the transparency around community and advisory around that? And also looking at the funding, the financial resources and what constraints and limitations are there? And looking at your grants program and and so on. So those are kind of the focus areas that we'll be looking at in terms of the current context from a kind of research and documentation perspective. But we really do try to look for the community engagement is the largest part of our work in terms of going in depth with that. Please feel free to ask me any questions as we go along. We're just trying to frame kind of the ecosystem and the continuum of the development of arts, culture and heritage and where, where you might be situated on the community, on that continuum. And where you'd like to go on this continuum of how, you know, how far along the continuum do you want to go in the next ten years? And how that, so we see that you have arts and heritage collections, buildings. You know, you're looking at tourism quite a bit now in terms of that. Certainly, you're doing festivals and events, those pieces. So it's, it's, it's a different type of community because it is a township. It's not a city. So you have these small hamlets around and how will that work? So our work really will be focused on place-based, what is unique around this community and the individual communities as well as the collective community, which is the township. And how do we ensure that we have a perspective of those individual communities as well as the collective vision so that we can take that perspective into account? So our methodology around that is we really try to be participatory in our community engagement. We will have, we have a public survey on the Engage, it's, it's on your website now. We have had paper surveys filled out already. We'll be having a separate youth survey. We'll be having a youth lab in late August as well. And we'll be doing, as I say, these labs. But the idea is that this plan will be co-created by community. We are not, our consultant group is is primarily guiding the process, not and leading it, but not coming in as the experts. So we understand and I think we're conscious of the fact that the community has its own expertise and knowledge and we try to harvest that throughout the process. So this is the way we work, community first. We've established a community working group of five leaders in the community to work alongside us in the next months. And those leaders are from various sectors. We also have established an interdepartmental working group across departments because we know arts, cultural and heritage is not a solo standalone effort. It requires, I mean, we even, you know, had a discussion this morning and the one a couple of weeks ago. And fire is very much involved with the event, so it does cross many departments. And the idea behind this is that the community working group and the interdepartmental working group will also guide us so that we're not having a standalone plan, that our, our goal is to ensure that this is integrated among the larger civic planning priorities for the township as well. And so that we can get insight and knowledge from those other departments and have them feed into this plan and buy into it as well, so that it's, it doesn't have to stand on its own, that it does cross many departments, whether that's planning or recreation or fire or finance. So and social community development perspective. So we've had two meetings already and we will continue to do that. And then obviously, the authority rests with council. So the timeline on the engagement, the survey, as I said, has been launched. Youth engagement will go out through the summer and through September. We have the local artist team at the events, June to August. The Idea Labs will happen that week. We try to do them to gain momentum so that if somebody wants to attend, can't attend one in the evening, they can attend the next morning. So we have them in the evening and in the morning, business tourism at seven thirty in the morning versus arts lab will be in the evening, six to eight thirty. So I think we've just started the marketing on those and the emails will, are going out. We'll also do one-on-one interviews with interest holders as well and as well as council members, if that's okay with you. We'd like to interview you over the summer. The indigenous conversation circles will take place one-on-one, obviously, but there'll be also conversation, talking circles from now until September as well. And at the end of that, we'll be coming back to you with a report on what we heard. Yeah, any questions?
Counsel, any questions? The presenter. Seeing none from counsel. I'm just going to confirm something. It was mentioned about, there's, there's ways for residents to become engaged and knowledgeable. That is on the engage.loyalist.ca site, right? Thank you. I just wanted to make sure and get that full, the full address out there. So, thank you. So thank you very much for presenting. We did, in our spring town hall meetings, we did present this as well, trying to build a little excitement ahead of time and prepare them for it coming. So hopefully it pays off and I see you're planning on being at the fall ones as well. So that we'll be seeing you there and at many other locations, I believe, too. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
We appreciate the presentation. Counsel, I would entertain a motion to receive. Deputy Mayor, so moved, seconded by Counsel Parks. Call the question. In favor, motion is passed. Okay, so this brings us to open forum. So fifteen minutes of the meeting has been set aside for open forum. And in any individual may address counsel regarding an item on the agenda, excluding matters under the statutory public meetings section on the same agenda. Each person has three minutes to speak. And any, anyone wishing to speak could sign up in advance. Or at the meeting, I will call in chambers. Just raise your hand if you wish to speak. And then I will go online to the virtual audience and just ask you to use the raised hand feature to be able to be brought into the meeting from the virtual audience. And we did not have any pre-register sign up, correct, this evening?
Through the mayor, I do not have any pre-registered.
Okay, so acknowledging that we still do have one more presentation to come further down the agenda. Is there anyone else in the chambers here that would wish to address counsel through the open forum? Seeing none? We will go to the virtual audience. If there's anyone in the virtual audience that wishes to address counsel, please use the raised hand feature and we can bring you into the meeting.
To the mayor or through the mayor, there is no one in the virtual audience with their hand raised.
Good. So that completes open forum. The next one, items for consideration. Municipal housing infrastructure program, health and safety water stream application. Welcome. Is there anything that you wish to provide this evening, any information or just here to answer questions?
Nothing to add, your worship, just here to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So counsel, we do have the report before us, along with the recommendation. If someone's ready, would you like to present the recommend, or motion? Counsel Pradrick?
I would move that the report from Corporate Services Strategy and Innovative Department dated June tenth, two thousand and twenty five, Remunicipal Housing Infrastructure Program, Health and Safety Water Stream Application be received and that counsel direct staff to submit an application to the Health and Safety Water Stream for the Lakeview Sewage Pumping Station capacity, mechanical and electrical upgrades.
So moved? Seconded by Counsel Willis. Mover, any comments or questions?
Comment just briefly, anytime we can get money to improve our infrastructure from somebody else, it's greatly appreciated. Comment just briefly, anytime we can get money to improve our infrastructure from somebody else, it's greatly appreciated.
Seconder, any other comments? I think you summed it up. So with that, I'll call the question. All in favor. Motion is passed. Thank you. Request to waive planning application fees. Welcome. Ask the standard question. Do you have anything additional to share this evening?
Uh, through the mayor, no, we do not. We we're just here for questions.
Thank you. So again, uh, yes, I've got the right report up. We do have the report here with recommendation. Would someone like to present? Counsel Ennis.
Thank you. Through the mayor, um move that the report from the Development Services Division dated June tenth twenty twenty-five re request to waive planning application fees, one four two Lodge Street be received and two, the council waived the minor variance application fee for an upcoming minor variance application for a hot tub at one forty-two Lodge Street.
So moved, seconded by the deputy. Any comments from the mover?
Just that I think it's it's reasonable to waive, given the history of the file.
Seconder. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor. Motion is passed. Draft plan approval extension for N R K Development Limited. Do you have any additional information this evening?
Through the mayor, no, we do not. Just here for questions. Thank you.
Counsel? Would someone like to put a motion forward? Deputy Mayor Townend.
I moved the report from the Development Services Division, June tenth twenty twenty-five re N R K Development Limited. Draft plan approval extension be received and that the following be adopted. That the written request by Byron Keane on behalf of N R K Development Limited requesting an extension of draft plan approval be received. Be that pursuant to section fifty-one thirty-three of the Planning Act R S O nineteen ninety as amended. Draft plan approval for N R K Development Limited subdivision is hereby extended to June thirteenth twenty twenty-eight. See that pursuant to section fifty-one forty-four of the Planning Act R S O nineteen ninety as amended. Condition number two of the draft plan approval to N R K Development Limited be amended to read as follows. In quotations, two, the draft plan approval unless extended shall lapse on June thirteenth twenty twenty-eight. And D pursuant to section fifty-one forty-seven, counsel for the Corporation of Loyalist Township deems the change to the conditions to be minor for the N R K Development Limited draft plan approval of subdivision.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Willis. Any comments, questions from the mover? Seconder, other members of counsel, Counsel Prodrick?
Through you, Your Worship, uh, just one quick question to staff. Um, the extensive extension is uh may be granted till June thirteenth twenty twenty-eight. Is there any extensions beyond that possible or how what happens if we're in this scenario in June of that year?
Yes, uh, through the mayor to Counsel Project. So if at that time further extensions are are needed or requested, uh, the applicant does have the ability to request for another extension. Uh, at that time, staff could review and would bring a recommendation forward to counsel as to whether it is appropriate to extend or not to extend.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? I just have one. If another extension is requested, did the legislation not change that after with extensions at some point, um, the uh allotment for utilities, water and sewer could be um withdrawn in the at some point in the future?
Yes, I believe so. I believe that's correct. If Andrea has more information, she can share it, but I believe so that is correct.
Oh, you've got backup coming.
Uh, yeah, uh, through you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, we did implement the uh capacity bylaw allocation uh back in December, uh, which would give us the ability to revoke that capacity. However, the way it was written in terms of grandfathering is it gave a three-year grace period for any previously allocated. So we're still within that grace period. Um, so until that's up, we can't uh revoke that capacity.
So that would be up for consideration if an extension was requested again. Okay, I just I remembered the legislation. I just wanted to make sure how it would play out in a scenario like this. Thank you. So with no further comments, back to the mover for final. That was you looking the wrong way. Thank goodness, people help me along. With that, I'll call the question. All in favor. Motion is passed. Thank you. Proposed skate park and pump track located at Lawless Park. And we do have some presenters here this evening. I when the time is appropriate, I would just ask the director to and Yep. introduce them.
Through you, Your Worship, um, we do have the pleasure of having um Trevor Morgan and Phil Gurney from New Line Skate Parks here tonight and they're um able to do a brief presentation for counsel on um skate parks and pump tracks um as well as uh Brian Pakman from Amy Group is also here. If that's okay.
Thank you. Yes, welcome and uh please go ahead with your presentation whenever you're ready.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Counsel, thank you again for having us tonight. Perfect. So yes, in advance of agenda item eleven point four, we're here to provide um some education on modern skate parks and pump tracks. Um, and in the context of what could be possible here for the township. We're going to quickly just give you a bit of information about our team and why we hope we're qualified to provide this information tonight and then um, look at why there's so much development of these facilities across Canada and throughout Ontario and what value it would bring to the community. And then share some project stories that would provide a glimpse of what might be possible here in the community and then obviously open it up to some questions. So quickly about our team, uh, we are full service landscape, architecture, engineering and construction team that focuses on the development of integrated, modern, concrete municipal skate parks and pump trucks. It's a bit of a mouthful there, but um at the end of the day, we uh do custom design and construction that's tailored to the specific site that we're given. What the community wants to see as far as users, skateboarders, B M X inline skaters and so forth, and then what the rest of the community values for those specific sites. And we develop a really uh integrated holistic facility. We've been out this for about twenty-five years now and across North America, primarily here in Canada, have developed about four hundred and fifty municipal parks. And uh in Ontario here, probably I have sixty on the uh screen here, but probably getting closer to a hundred now. And uh eleven projects are ongoing at this given time. And so at the end of the day, what we would try to bring to every project is just a really unparalleled level of local understanding and resources. And then match that with the specific design build expertise that we have for these facilities. So skate parks and pump tracks, the users, who are they? I think um, you know, right at the beginning, you hear skate park, you'd say, well, it's just skateboarders. And maybe a pump track, if if counsel's familiar, would say, well, bikes. But certainly those aren't the only user groups. You're going to see scooter riders uh on these inline skates, even the old quad roller skates, uh, children on push bikes without the pedals and even mountain bikes. Uh, across North America, that user group equates to around twenty-eight point five million users. And so you can imagine sort of looking in Canada and these communities, there's a a large amount of people involved in in these activities. And what we're seeing now with these uh these user groups and in the skate parks and pump tracks is we're seeing um greater diversity in terms of ages, younger and younger users and older and older users. I'm forty-seven years old. I still go to the park with my daughters who are ten and twelve. And uh, you know, you'll see skateboarders even younger than that and and older enjoying it, lot more female participation. And even those from the uh disabled community, we have people on wheelchairs going in and riding the pump tracks and skate parks. Uh, those with uh visual impairment now going in and and learning how to ride. So um a really diverse and growing user group. And when we look at why these activities are so popular, I think right off the top, it's just the part of it is just the low barriers to participation. When you grab your device, which could be again a skateboard or B M X bike or inline skates, you're you're going out and finding your terrain and it's self progressing. You don't need to join a team, get a uniform, pay a fee. And um and that casual recreation, come as you go, pick up activity, self progressing is is really, I think, a large draw for why we see so many uh individuals involved. And then there's this lifestyle and self-expression uh aspect of these activities where, you know, you 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 ask a a skateboarder, um, what is skateboarding? And uh, you know, sometimes they say it's a sport, but they'd say it's also just a way of life, you know, and the culture and and um the art sort of mixed with athleticism as part of these activities. And uh, interestingly enough, you know, we've seen the introduction of these activities in the Olympics in uh twenty twenty-one and uh also continuing on uh after that and um, you know, at the high level of these activities, uh, you know, World Cup level competitions for all of these activities have been going on for well over fifteen years. So what's driving the growth and why so many communities are investing in these facilities? Um, off the top, I would say it's really just to keep families uh and and youth who are interested in these activities invested in their communities. So just as um municipalities are creating opportunities for hockey and baseball and 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 other uh sports. Those who are interested in these activities are looking for safe sanctioned areas and and to feel valued and connected to their community through having those those areas that uh the rest of the community can appreciate and enjoy too. Obviously, youth mental and physical health is uh well known as a priority in our country and across North America with uh the rise of the digital age and so many distractions and things that keep youth and and folks sedentary. You know, how can we activate um and get people active out in their community? Well, again, this is a great opportunity to do that. Um, that's different than typical organized sport. And then the tourism and economic impact, uh, the network of these parks are being created in communities across Canada and across Ontario. And there's a large population that will want to experience each different unique park and communities and they'll purposely travel around, stop in these communities, visit, spend money at local businesses, maybe even spend a night. I know when I was twelve years old on a family trip and I was avid skateboarder, I could be very influential to spend an extra night in a community if they had that one skate park. And then just the cost uh versus benefit or return on investment. The capital cost for these facilities versus the long-term lifespan, thirty-plus years, uh, very little maintenance um is really making sense for a lot of investment uh versus some other more expensive uh facilities that municipalities are pursuing. So what do these facilities look and function like? Uh, the easiest way for uh me to describe this is probably tell a couple of project stories. So one off the top is called the Plaza at the Forks. This is in Winnipeg, Manitoba, uh, developed uh in around two thousand and six and arguably it's the most well-known or one of the most well-known skate parks in the world. But in stark contrast, where we were, let's say twenty years ago, where we're getting the scraps of urban land to develop this facility, these types of facilities, city of Winnipeg sort of turned that upside down and said, you know what, we're going to give you one of our most precious prized spaces to do it, but we want you to really respect how special this is for the community. So if anyone's ever been to the forks area, it's just outside of the city core. Four million visitors a year, their premier cultural, historic entertainment district. And right in the middle now is this thoroughly modern youth park. But it's a far cry from some of those stereotypical images that may come to mind for some folks when you hear skateboard park. On top of, you know, if you see in this image, what a skateboarder or B M Xer would look like or look at and say, hey, really well laid out dimensioned terrain, there's color, texture, art, inviting viewing and socializing areas, strong connections to pedestrian uh linkages. Art and even interactive art, but not just art that, you know, is a cool shape that doesn't really have any connection to the community, something that has meaningful connection to the history of what's happening in the area. Uh, so this particular piece is known as the magic carpet. It actually references the rail lines that used to meet in the forks when it was the city's main train terminal. And we thought, well, what would it be like if we were to ripple a rail line up and it would create this wave light form and then we suspended it? So it's an interactive art piece that again tells the story of the community. Uh, another art installation that's rideable, the the spirit fish references some First Nation lore about catfish and nearby red and ascendant rivers. Different lighting, um accents. And here's the park on a very busy day. It's it's obviously a large destination park, but what's really interesting is that on any given day, you might see, you know, a hundred, two hundred people skateboarding, riding their B M X and so forth. You probably have another seventy people who are in the area, have nothing to do with those activities, who are just appreciating it as a public space. And that's our definition of a a successful, modern community skate park or pump track is yes. You know, child, youth oriented, functionally for functional for skateboarding and B M X, but also a prized public space that everyone can appreciate and enjoy, even if you're not one of the primary users. So that's sort of the, you know, the larger destination park context. When we get down to something, what would be more appropriate here eh for the township? Um, this isn't just a community park. This is one we actually just did down south in Georgia. But uh pump track and what you see to the right-hand side of the image and then the skate park area, sort of the street scape and the bowl to the left, but it's in a park environment where there's just lots of passive green space, some pathway connections. There's a a bandstand area and um not much more and then surrounded by residential. Here you can see the pump track style terrain in the foreground. So pump track is just a sort of loop of undulating bumps and pockets where you can, on a skateboarder, B M X, you sort of just, you don't need to push or pedal. You you sort of use the momentum of the different curves and rollers to go around and it's great for beginners all the way through really advanced riders. Here you can see it in action with some of the skateboarders, mountain bikers. And uh some of the skate park area in action. A little closer to home and the scale of what might be considered here for the township is a park that we finished in Lincoln, Ontario. So you can see again, it's it's not in a vacuum at uh the skate park. Um, if you see my cursor is here, the pump track to the left. Uh, and then it's surrounded by children's playscape. They have a bandstand residential across the street and this is just adjacent to their Fleming Recreation Centre that they've built. And here's uh again, some of the imagery of what the pump track might look like. This is in the asphalt medium, so they're either done typically out of asphalt or concrete so that they allow bikes and then the small wheels too. And then here's some of the skate park and the park in action. And then one final example that's uh very close to um again, a scale that might be appropriate for uh the community here is a project we finished in Barhead, Alberta, skate park in the foreground, pump track in the background and uh, this is again, the renderings that we would typically generate through getting feedback from the community and 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 adapting it to the site. And then here's the park finished in reality there. So um, again, a very diverse park, eh all different types and shapes and sizes that fit again, what we're doing for the specific site we have. And just show the the character and the nature and creativity that we can have with these facilities. So yeah, every park has its story and uh we hope there's a story to be told here for the township. But very integrated, green space, uh, again, uh, connections to pathways, color, texture, uh, art installations, again, that can be very exciting to put a signature, I guess, of the community within the architecture of the park. Even through different lighting schemes, if that's something that's desired and then accessibility, again, as I spoke about, you're likely to have folks from the adaptive community who would like to ride this park. We have um visually impaired riders who go around. There's sometimes audio beacons that are put in to help them move around. And then we also have just even general accessibility through the park for wheelchairs and wheelchair M X athletes. And even being creative for the site furnishings there, you can see uh some of the neat things we can do. And then finally, to keep the park active when it's done is you're likely to have user groups and community groups that will say, hey, we would love to have some some level of organized events there that could be lessons nights, um, some community-based contests and so forth. And so we really try to design uh a modern park with that in mind. So before I go to the question and answer, I'm just going to quickly stop sharing this one and pull up a image or two that has some placeholder conceptual work that was created in the context of Loyalist Park, just to give you a sense of scale. And Lori may speak to this more. There we go. So this shows a aerial photo of the overall park area. And this gives you a rough sense of scale of what might be occupied. Obviously, it can be, this is not the the design or it's just showing a sample design of the scale that might be appropriate. And it could take a number of different shapes and forms. The idea here was to really respect that there's passive area of the park that needs to be maintained, appropriate offset from other uses, you know, strong connection to the the pathways there, appropriate offset from residential and all those things. Here's one example. It could also look something like that. It can be shifted around. There's lots of different ways that the the final design could be developed. These are just giving a rough sense of scale for right now. And at that, I'll open it up for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the presenter at this time? Counsel Willis.
Dear the mayor, thank you for your presentation. And this is really exciting because last week I learned what a pump track was. We actually have some some very competitive BMX riders in our communities. And I'm wondering, is there a difference between a pump track that would be recreation versus competition? Or would there be the possibility of hosting competitions at this facility?
Yeah, so the 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 answer to the first part is there's definitely higher level competition grade facilities that probably would maybe be in a larger center. But there should still be the ability at a community level and at a regional level to host competitive events at even what's being proposed for this this development. Absolutely.
Yes.
I noticed the examples you gave us, a lot of them are cited very close to resident residential areas. And there is a buffer zone between where this one's planned. It's not a noise consideration for neighbors?
Yeah, really what you're going to have for noise is children's voices more than anything. The actual wheels and and noise from the 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 concrete and the and the and the wheels on that is is negligible. So it'd be similar to sort of like a playground. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Aye, none? Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. Certainly come a long way from when I was in my teens on probably a $10 skateboard trying to go down the largest hill where I lived at the time called Big Hill and with blind corners. So this is, this is pretty interesting. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel, we do have the report before us with a recommendation. Counsel Pradrick.
Thanks for the presentation and through your worship, I recommend that the report from the Community and Customer Services Department dated June 10th, 2025, re-proposed skate track, proposed skate park and pump track located at Loyalist Park be received and that council direct staff to receive the development of a skate park and pump track at Loyalist Park 133 Pratt Drive, Amherstview. That after public consultation is completed, staff be directed to bring the final skate park and pump track design, including the location within the park to council for approval. That council direct staff to establish a site access and construction agreement with the confidential donor and that council authorize the mayor and chief administrative officer to execute a final site plan, access and construction agreement with the confidential donor for phase one of the skate park and pump track to the satisfaction of the chief administrative officer.
So moved seconded by Counsel Bodrick. Over, any comments?
I would love to make some comments here. I enjoyed the presentation and a couple of things I learned and I am older than the mayor, so I do remember the 60s and skateboards and all that. I loved the piece about accessibility for kids who are for lack, I'm not if I'm politically correct here, but have mobility challenges. We don't have anything right now in the township and our pool is in that direction. Cost friendly, we all know the the rush in the in the spring to get your kids into camp because they need something to do. And again, I I think it's it, although we talk about kids, it becomes a gathering point for adults too. You know, you're pushing a stroller with maybe a two year old and you've got six, eight, 10, whatever age they start. Location, I think the closest one to us, and I know there's a few in the audience that could answer, is Napanee. And then you go to, Picton's got a great site, but again, it's it's probably 20 years old now. I I think it becomes a hub for gathering and it fits into the master recreation plan on, I think it said page 25 or 45. So and again, also an opportunity to add something to the community. And I think we haven't had a recreational facility addition in well over, I'm going to say 40 years. And again, it's just through the the leadership of a community member who wishes to help out in times where we don't have a lot of money to do a lot of things that we'd like to do. So thanks.
Cute. Seconder?
Yeah, I just think it's great to get people outside and together, interacting. It's fantastic.
Thank you. Other members of council. Counsel Ennis.
Thank you. It's a it's a very generous donation. I'm really appreciative to the for the donation. And I think the the donor has chosen well. It's it's a amenity that with an amenity that focuses on youth and one that I think will be very well used.
Deputy Mayor?
I just want to echo those particular comments of appreciation to the donor. That's incredibly generous and and provides an amazing opportunity for us. What I particularly enjoyed about the presentation was to appreciate the particular kinds of of youth that that something like this can engage, you know, based on the whole lifestyle and and culture that goes with it, not one I claim to understand. But I I I think I think it it it's not just, you know, youth engagement writ large in some sort of big, broad context. This is this is something quite specific that I think will cater to to members in our community that otherwise don't have a facility like this.
Other members, Counsel Parks.
I really don't have much to add other than my colleagues have already said. I do go by the one in Napanee quite regularly and it is a gathering place. You see all all sorts of demographics and ages and different usage of it. So I fully support this and thank you to the donor.
So I'll just put in my two cents. Like I said, it's come a long way. When I was young, I've actually seen some of the like Madoc, they have a nice one there. I remember when they were building the first phase and I was kind of like, what is going on in there? And now to see it now, it's been developed into the whole park is basically devoted to this now with some green space and some shelters and things, but and it's packed all the time. And so it is something that is what I believe will be well used. And I won't take up airspace repeating everyone, but this is a great opportunity, I think, for Loyalist Township to be able to provide another amenity new to the community that will be used, very well used, I believe, for an extended period of time. So with that, I'll go back to the mover for final. Counsel Pradrick?
No, that's good. Again, appreciation to the donor and for the presentation.
I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion is passed. Thank you. And now a motion to move into the committee of whole. Would someone like to present the motion? Counsel Pradrick?
We moved to the committee of whole. We move into the committee of the whole.
So moved seconded by Counsel Parks. All in favor, please raise a hand. Motion.
For people.
All right, everyone, I'll call this committee of the whole to order at 7:12 PM. Any declarations of pecuniary interest? Later thereof, seeing none. Items for consideration, 13.3.1 Asset Management Proposed Levels of Service Discussion. And we have Mr. Scott with us.
Thank you very much. I have a presentation tonight to review the proposed levels of service for asset management. Share the. Oh, not there, okay. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. The the 2024, so under the 2024 Asset Management Plan, we did have a funding gap. The general rate has approximately a $5.4 million annual deficit for between what is required under our plan and what funding we are currently providing and annual contributions we're providing. For the user rate, the average annual requirement is about $5.9 million, while our annual funding available is currently 3.4. So we have a deficit of about $2.5 million. So in 2022, council adopted a 20 year plan to eliminate that that funding gap. And we're slowly been working our way through that plan and and we are starting to see some improvements with reducing that gap. Currently, that rate is set at, for the general rate is about 1.1% annual increases to the general tax levy, while user water rates are generally increasing in annual or annually about 0.2% and sewers about 1.0%. And then on top of that, we include a CPI adjustment under that plans. So just going to quickly highlight the public consultation. There is a full copy of the results within the report. I'm not going to go through the full full plan, but I do have some slides to kind of highlight or some of the key highlights coming out of those slides. So a survey was established on the Loyalist Engage, sorry, Engage Loyalist site. We only had 53 respondents, which is a rather small sample size. And it was about evenly split between both rural and urban residents. The survey asked residents to or any respondents to identify priorities, satisfaction levels, preferences regarding infrastructure investment and service delivery. So again, some of the key highlights, 73% of the respondents felt the township was effective in maintaining its public infrastructure. 69% of respondents felt that sustainability and resilience was very or somewhat important in asset management decisions. 81% of respondents supported regular preventative maintenance to extend the life of assets. When asked which asset categories they would like to provide feedback on, 72% of respondents commented on roads, while only 28% commented on parks, walkways, trails and beaches, and approximately 20% for water and sewer. So coming out of the out of the results of the survey, the highest need for improvement, again, this is from residents where they see the need for improvement, is 51% felt that roads needed to see improvement, while 32% felt that stormwater needed additional improvement. And the highest request to expand service, so not And the highest request to expand service, so not just maintain but expand service, 16% of respondents commented that roads should be expanded, while 13% commented that natural assets would be should also be expanded. When asked what they would, what the resident or what the respondents preference would be for dealing with the funding gap, 17% indicated to increase the capital contribution and expand services. Another 17% said we should increase the capital contributions but maintain services. 25% said we should may indicate indicated that we should maintain the current 20-year funding plan that council previously approved and only 5.6% wanted to see decreased service levels. So coming out of the since I met, well, we did the 2024 asset management plan and I did the presentation to you a few months ago concerning what council was looking for from proposed levels of service, the working groups have gone to work and on developing those proposed levels of service. So generally, there were five working groups representing all the divisions that have assets involved within the asset management plan. And the general consensus coming out of that, those meetings were that for looking at proposed levels of service is that we utilize the percentage of assets in fair or better condition and that we use 80% for all asset categories. The average condition of assets would be remain in the good category or which is generally 60 to 80% for all assets. And we would continue to look for energy consumption reductions and that the capital reinvestment rate would continue to increase as per the 20-year approved plan. There are some minor category specific proposed levels of service, which I'll highlight when I get a little bit further into the presentation. So the next few slides are going to deal with the draft proposed levels of service for the 80% fair or better condition. So what this is for the general rate assets, so it doesn't include water and sewer. And if if we with our current 20-year funding plan, we would maintain an 80% fair or better over the next 50 years and we are required under the asset management plan to only look at 10 years, but we didn't want to get to the point where, you know, we get the end of the 10 years and all of a sudden there's a big issue with meeting those proposed levels of service. So in when you see the 2024 asset management plan is not going to include the 50-year plan, but I wanted you to understand or see that it is a sustainable level of service for the longer period of time with with the approved funding plan that council previously adopted. On the water and sewer side, it's generally, we do meet that 80% fair or better, except for the very end of the 50-year period. And the feeling is that our ongoing growth of the township will deal with that little short period of time. Again, we have lots of time between now and then to deal deal with any of those issues, but we know with the growth in this township that we're going to see, you know, water and sewer plants being upgraded on a more regular basis because of the capacity issues related to growth, so. Same on the sewer side, there is again, there's a there is a small blip where we fall below the threshold and that's generally about 24 years from now. So again, there's lots of time to deal with that short little blip without having to make major changes to the plan. The next few slides will deal with the proposed level of service for average condition. So I've shown two, the first one is the general rate plan. And I've shown two models on the plan. The the first one is the current spending. So we were to continue spending at our current capital contribution of $5.2 million a year, our average condition would continue to fall over the next 50 years to the point that we would be into poor condition by the end of the 50-year plan. However, with the current plan approved by council, the condition does continue to decline for the first 20 years, but then it levels off by around 2045 as our assets, our asset plan matures and some of the assets start to regular replacement schedules start to kick in. And so we are able to meet that that good level of service as a long-term sustainable plan. On the user rate, so this is water and sewer combined, very similar results under the current expenditures of $3.4 million. The conditions are relatively similar over the next 20 years, but then continue to decline at our current spending level where under the plan approved by council, it would level off around the 70, 75% average and it would maintain that for the full 50-year period. So coming out of that, the next several charts will deal with the actual proposed levels of service for each of the asset categories that I had mentioned previously. So when we look at fleet, fleet was a non-core asset, so it was up to municipality to define the levels of service. So last year, when you you saw the levels of service, we were looking at what the current levels are. These have been updated for 2025 and then we have what our proposed levels of service are. And and the proposed levels of service again are aiming for where do we want to be at the end of the 10-year period? It's not necessarily that we may be starting out slightly above or slightly below that, but where do we want to generally be within within the next 10-year period? So so the percentage of assets in fair or better condition, you know, we're currently 70% for general rate fleet and we're 66% for utilities. There's been a lot of challenges on fleet around COVID catching up with the larger vehicle orders. There are several there or there are some vehicles that are already on order, which is going to help bring that number back up. And generally, citywide is is projecting if we if we do everything within our plan, we'll be in the 82 to 92% range at the at the end over the next 20 years. The average condition of assets similarly would be 85% for the average condition and 77% for utilities and those are both in the good range while the 85% is actually in the very good range right now. It is going to fall, the average condition will fall back into the good range, but we're projecting between 70 and 80, 88% over the next 20 years. Energy consumption, that's the percentage of vehicles that are zero emissions. We're currently 1%. We have one vehicle that's fully electric. New fire chief's vehicle was purchased in 2025 and the plan is that will increase through regular replacement vehicle. There's some discussion that needs to be had about how we're going to fund some of the the increased costs for those. Currently, asset management plan is not specifically including the extra financing for those vehicles, but that'll be a separate discussion coming out of the climate action plan work and and discussions with finance. And then the capital reinvestment rate, which we've talked about before, the 20-year plan is to get it up close to 7% from the 3%. We're not going to get there over the over the next 10 years, but with the the proposed levels of services that would continue to increase as per that plan. Similarly, for machinery, furniture and equipment, you know, we're in the 77 to 79% currently, we're aiming at 80%. Average condition, we're 81%, 84% for utilities, which is still kind of in the good range of 60, 80%. And again, capital reinvestment rate would continue to increase. For facilities, the percentage of assets that are fair or better condition for the general rate is 84% and utilities is currently 94%. Again, those are actually the utilities especially is well above the the 80% threshold at this point. And again, we're looking not to bring it down to 80, but to maintain 80 or above, right? It's greater than 80 is what we're looking for. And then the average condition of assets are 80% for the general rate and 76% for utilities. And again, the capital reinvestment rate would continue to increase. For land improvements, which are things like playgrounds and parks and other assets, walkways and and other things that improve improve the land, percentage of assets in fair or better condition is 73% right now and we're looking, it's projecting to be between 76 and 95% if we continue along the current path. So the proposed level of service of 80% would be met. The average condition of assets is currently 79%, so we're right in the top end of the good range and our capital reinvestment rate would continue to increase. So the road network is a core asset. So again, with core assets, that was your roads, your water, your sewers, your bridges and storm sewers are your core assets. So the levels of service are defined within the legislation for core assets, whereas the non-core assets, the municipality could choose which which assets they wanted or which levels of service they wanted to implement. That being said, we have in some places, we have added our own assets over and above what's mandated. So when I look at, when you look at the scope, we talked about the lane plumbers of arterial collector local roads, we are suggesting that we maintain the maintain that. And what we, you know, we know the municipalities, the amount of roads we have are going to increase through growth, but what we're not proposing to do is that the municipality is going to spend more money to build those roads. It's a lot of those roads or vast majority of roads the township receives are developer donated, so that's not a funding side for us. So this is looking at our funding, so that's why we're suggesting it's being being maintained. The percentage of asphalt roads, which are HCB roads, are currently 76%, which is good condition and the LCB, which is your surface treated roads is 82% are very good. And again, the the proposed level of service is to meet that that good be in that good range. For gravel roads, we're currently at 67.7% as of the end of 2024, going into 2025. I've seen the numbers for this year and and we're still, we're actually closer to 70% for for 20, the 2025 condition assessments. So again, we're maintaining the middle of the road for that that good range. Percentage of assets in fair or better condition, 93% of, we're currently 93% of our assets are in fair or better condition under the roads network. And again, we're proposing to maintain a minimum of 80%. And the the average condition again is 81%, so we're we're right at the top end of the good range. And again, we're looking to continue increasing the capital reinvestment rate as per the 20-year plan. For bridges and culverts, so Osim is the are basically any bridges or culverts that are larger than three meters, either three meters in diameter or a bridge crossing, 10 feet for those imperial. But so it's a percentage of municipalities with loading or dimension dimensional restrictions. We currently have 6.7%, which is really one single bridge that is currently a single lane bridge and there's no weight restrictions. And currently, within the the 20-year asset management plan, there's no plans to replace that one lane bridge. It'll be something that'll be looked at when it gets to the end of its life cycle. The average condition in index value for Osim structures in the township is currently 72%, which is good. That number does decline towards the end of the 20-year period. However, currently, we only have three midlife rehab projects built into the asset management plan and I would expect that you'll see in the next 10-year period, there'll be some additional midlife rehab projects that are likely coming up, which should deal with deal with that issue. And then the percentage of assets in fair or better condition, we're currently at 100% and certainly we would be greater than, we want to maintain bridges at higher than 80%, but that that's the target. And then our capital reinvestment rate again would continue to increase. For the storm system, it's the percentage of properties resilient to 100-year storm. We don't currently have enough quality mapping to say what our overall percentage is. However, the urban areas, any of the newer urban areas are all designed to be 100% resilient to those storms. And as areas are reconstructed, we're constantly making improvements to drainage in those areas. So again, we're saying the proposed level service is going to be increased from where we are. As more modeling becomes available, we'll probably be able to put a percentage on that, but right now we just, we don't have that number available. The percentage of assets in fair or better on for the storm system is 87% and and our current average condition is 92%. For the water system, the percentage of properties connected to municipal water is 71%. Again, we're saying maintain it likely that percentage will increase through growth, but the municipality is not proposing to go on a large water main construction spree to connect rural properties unless there's a demand, a future demand for it. So the current asset management plan doesn't plan to fund that. And same with the percentage of fire flows available, we're currently 99.65%. And generally, that's located in the in the industrial park area and until there's a future connection to either bath or a water tower or additional pumps, that issue won't be addressed and and nor is there need to address it at this point. So so again, it's the the current plan is to maintain the the funding for that level. And then again, so the number of connections for boil water advisories, connection days were zero currently right now. I believe there actually might be a small decimal in there, but it's again, the plan is to propose maintain those levels. And then the percentage of assets in fair or better, we're currently 86%, so we're setting a target for 80%. And the average condition of assets is 88%, so we're we're still aiming for the good 60, 80%. On the on the sewer side of things, percentage of properties 69 connected to the municipal wastewater system, we're at 69%. Again, we're not proposing to hook up rural properties to the sewer system unless it's through other growth projects. Percentage of assets in fair or better condition, we're currently 95% for the wants to do reboot right in the middle. Percentage of assets in fair or better condition, sorry, we're currently 95% for the sewer system and again, we're aiming for 80% or better. Average condition, we're 84%, so we're above the good range we're currently. And then again, the number of events for, we don't have any combined sewers, so that number will always be zero. However, the province does require us to report on it, which is why it's there. The number of connection days having wastewater backups compared to the total number of properties, so it's a relatively, it's a very low number right now, zero. And again, the the plan is to maintain. And then the number of affluent violations, we are looking to continue to reduce through our normal upgrades that are happening through our our capital plans. So next steps. We're working on updating our condition assessments, so road conditions are being finished right now. The building condition assessments, the inspections have been done and we're expecting to have those results by the end of this month. So those need to be built into the models. We need to update the conditions and the replacement costs as well. And then we would finalize the modeling of the recommended scenarios so that when we come back to council in August with the asset management plan, we will have the the full, the full plan together as one document, you'll see it and then with as well as the financial background to show that it's sustainable. And as I said, we're we're planning to report that back to council in 2025. So the recommendations are in the report and I can turn the screen off and so you can see Counselor Budrick. And happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, for that presentation. Okay, committee, questions on the presentation or the reports? Counselor Willis?
Thank you, through the chair. A popular topic in front of this council is often dirt roads versus treated roads. Is the asset management plan where there would be plans made to convert existing gravel roads to treated surfaces or would that be somewhere else? This is just maintaining what we have?
Yeah, this is, this is generally maintaining what we're having. It also should reflect any plans that are in place for future expansion of of assets or or service levels. So if if a plan comes forward to councils, it says we So if if a plan comes forward to councils, it says we want to increase or reduce the number of gravel roads by paving more gravel roads, then that plan would come to council. We need to embed that into the asset management plan. If if that happens before we go come back to you in August, then we'll include it. Otherwise, we'll include it within the next, the next asset management plan of uh following the, we have to do every five years minimum after that, so.
Councillor Proderick.
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Can I just ask, can I ask you to go to page twenty one in your report there? Just I want to ask you a question, so I'm sure I'm
You like me to share it on the screen or I can
Doesn't matter to me.
Twenty one?
Yeah, please. I'm just using this as an example. So that circled area, is that a, is that a reflection of, let's say, something that was built fifty years previous is now sort of reached the end of cyclone, we're going to hit a bunch of that at the same time? Is that what that's
That's, yeah, it absolutely is. It's uh generally what you're looking at. It it could be any number of assets, but generally when there's enough of decline there, I suspect there's a a plant or two that are coming due in that timeframe. And again, generally, our plants have been expanded due to growth more than getting to the end of their life cycle. So as as we needed to make room within the plants for the additional capacity, then then those those expansions would take place anyway, so.
So i- in effect, you or your successor, I assume by then, is will know that within X number of years, we should be looking at that as opposed to getting a surprise? Is that the idea of this?
Absolutely. That's and that's, so again, we will do uh under the legislation, every minimum every five years, we have to do an update, a full asset management update. Um, however, starting in twenty twenty six under the legislation, we have to provide you with an annual uh update, like a, like a uh year end report on where we are at with meeting our requirements under the asset management plan. So that'd be a very short, brief, just saying, you know, here's the targets, here's where we're at, we're we're making progress, we're not making progress. What are the pitfalls or what what do we need to do to get back on track sort of thing, so.
Councillor Innes.
Thank you. Um, uh, these items I probably get the most complaints about the condition of gravel roads. Uh, I'm just wondering about, um, so the relative difference, you've got, you know, unpaved at sixty seven ish percent. And then uh the paved at seventy six and eighty two, how do you go about managing that relative difference? I mean, they're all within sixty to eighty, which is a fairly large range. How do we go about managing that sort of relative difference?
Well, I think, I mean, gravel roads are probably never going to be to the same condition level as asphalt roads. Or if they were, they we would all be using gravel roads, but um the what we're doing is with our, generally, every two to three years, we're going out there and we're uh, well, sorry. Every three years, we are resurfacing the gravel roads with fresh gravel in order to maintain their current levels of service. Um, we are also, as part of the asset management plan, doing uh condition assessments using established uh standards for um for identifying what those conditions are. So this criteria that that when staff go out, that they're utilizing to generate those condition ratings. So again, you know, weather is always a very dependent thing um with gravel roads. Um, you know, having the mild winters is is definitely been a challenge uh of late. Um, we also went through a spell where gravel roads weren't given the attention that that they needed. And and in the short term, you get away with it. In the longer term, that has negative uh negative condition ratings. And so we're building back up so that, you know, you you're seeing improvement in what's happening with the rural roads as they're getting more regular maintenance um from where they were, say, ten years ago. So I don't know if that answered your question or
Committee. I'd like a motion.
I move uh, one, that the presentation report from the Corporate Services Strategy and Innovation Department dated June tenth, twenty twenty five, re asset management proposed levels of service be received. Two, that council endorsed the proposed service level targets as outlined in Appendix A. And three, that staff be directed to incorporate these targets into the twenty twenty five asset management plan update and continue to optimize financial strategies to meet the proposed service level sustainably.
So moved, seconded by councillor Proderick. Any comments from the mover?
Only that this is a tremendous amount of work that I'm sure many, many people had a hand in. And uh, every time you present this to me, I'm I'm amazed that a small township like this was able to get this done. I don't know how others do it.
Others? All the question, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you. And we now come to item thirteen point three point two, draft subdivision engineering technical guidelines. We have a whole raft of engineering staff. We are engineer heavy this evening. I was including Director Campbell in that, of course. All right, who's going first? The director, please proceed, Mr.
And I'm not sure if it's close enough. Okay, so, good evening. Uh, before before staff dive into the presentation, I have the pleasure of delivering an acknowledgement of the many authors and collaborators uh on this comprehensive document. So this quest uh for a set of standard started well over a decade ago with Alex Scott and Dave Thompson. It was only possible through the extensive consultation with local developers and partners within the community, as well as collaboration over several years and diligent work by our dedicated staff across several divisions, including planning, building, uh, sorry, public works, recreation, utilities, and of course, engineering. So thank you particularly to Madison Lockwood, Corey Grant, and Luke McDonald for doing the heavy lifting uh over the last few months uh to push this over the finish line. So we can present this guideline uh this evening for the committee to consider and recommend council to endorse. So without further ado.
Okay, uh, so through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you very much for letting us present this. Uh, as MJ said, this is a rather momentous initiative for us. So we're happy to be bring this forward to council finally. Um, this initiative has been sort of helped over the finish line through the half uh funding. So the housing accelerated funding identified a number of uh various initiatives that would uh support housing growth in our community. Uh, and one of them is a set of guidelines and the engineering subdivision guidelines in particular were a part of that. Um, so the design guidelines provide clarity through uh streamlining the consolidation of the engineering and planning requirements. Uh, and so the intent of this is to provide uh one set of consistent documents that all developers can work from to make it easier to uh prepare their designs. Um, so through this process, uh, there will be a consolidation of this set of guidelines with a number of other documents. Um, so there will be planning guidelines, uh, terms of reference, which will focus on uh when developers are preparing background studies such as environmental impacts or um hydrogeological studies or other things like that. Um, the bylaw summary will provide relevant bylaws for developers such as fill bylaw or things like that. Uh, site plan guidelines, et cetera, all with the intent to uh provide that background and uh clear information to developers for what they need, with the focus of tonight obviously being on the subdivision engineering technical guidelines. Um, so uh what are the technical guidelines? So again, it's a complete overview of subdivision requirements. So we're looking at infrastructure like water, sanitary roads, stormwater parks. Um, and it's aligning uh our local uh municipal guidelines with uh a number of other um regulatory and other standards throughout the province that we have to follow. Um, so uh within this document, there's often references to other uh guidelines that are applicable as well, such as the Ontario provincial standard drawings or or details such as that. Uh, I'm, again, why do we need a set of technical guidelines? Uh, so again, it's just about uh streamlining the approval approval process for developers. So that way everyone knows uh who uh, everyone knows uh what needs to be submitted. And we can get the uh review timelines down because it's following the guidelines. We can reduce the number of submissions that were required because after that first, second submission review, we have everything finalized instead of having to go through three, four, or five submissions dragging out the whole process.
I guess that's where you guys get me. So um, I'm going to talk through sort of the the steps we went through to create the guidelines. You can hear me already. Uh, steps to create the guidelines um as well as sort of a high level overview uh of what's in them and some of the I guess some of like the legislation and other provincial guidelines that uh that sort of were governed by and um what loyalist uh what we actually include for um our own preferences and sort of from staff experience. So that, yeah, thank you. I know I talk quietly. Uh, so anyway, step one was actually a couple of years ago, but we started compiling reference documents from a variety of other municipalities. So um, not all municipalities have them, but um most of them do have good sets and and a lot of, a lot of different types. So we kind of picked a lot of reference documents and picked a few uh layouts that we liked. Um, municipalities of similar sizes and similar scope without being too prescriptive or under prescriptive. Um, and uh put together a set of uh a draft. So from that draft, we put it out to uh internal staff initially. Uh, so you know, public works, planning, utilities, uh, recreation facilities, uh, of course, engineering environment and our staff. Um, and uh worked out, we had individual meetings with all of those um divisions and uh uh use that feedback to to create a sort of a final draft. So once we had that final draft, we moved to uh external consultation. So uh, I think we have, we have a pretty good um, a a pretty cooperative uh development community. I think we we work sort of often with a lot of the same developers. So uh, we had really strong engagement with the several developers and their engineers. And uh, we were lucky to have them actually coordinate like one big response to us. So they gave us similar to like a planning application. They gave us a a really detailed response matrix, um, sort of going through the whole guideline from both the the developer's perspective um as well as the engineer's perspective. Um, so comments varied. Uh, they're fairly technical in nature, which is most common uh to some cost concerns, um, which were a little less common. Um, so we we reviewed all of them sort of against what, again, what our requirements are uh from a legislative uh perspective. Um, and also from uh just like material selection and and things that sort of we we could look at from a cost perspective to to help from that, from that side. Uh, so we also engaged recently in a uh now yearly development forum where we uh received feedback in person from a sort of a wider great range of groups, some of the, you know, some smaller developers, individual builders, et cetera, came uh where we solicited feedback uh there as well. So uh, following that, we reviewed uh, provided uh all of our responses to to the external comments to the developers uh and and they were generally received quite positively. Um, we scheduled a follow-up meeting to uh to discuss sort of some of the larger sticking points. Because, you know, obviously, like, there's going to be some things that that staff, uh, staff believe we should should have and and there's, you know, some pushback on things. And um largely, I think we were able to come to a sort of common ground on on almost all of them. Um, and uh it was, it was pretty well received. So uh, following that, uh, final draft, and uh we're at step four right now, which is uh here. So uh, from an overview perspective, so just going to go through sort of the the major sections in the report. So um, what you're going to see on these slides is a uh an overview of sort of the the um legislative and and other requirements, both provincial, sometimes uh federal uh that we're bound by. Um, so that that affect not necessarily like the materials, but definitely like the operation and and sort of uh they they steer a lot of the the requirements. So uh, from a stormwater perspective, um, I won't list everything off on these slides. Um, but uh generally, like the design of like stormwater management uh and pipes are governed by the MECP in terms of uh both their like design manual for for gravity pipes. Um, and for the stormwater facilities uh from a manual, it's getting quite old now, but it's called MOE two thousand and three, like stormwater design guideline. Um, so that's what engineers use. Um, so the section we have in the report here, it largely focuses on uh the storm sewer collection system. Uh, you know, sort of our our best practice uh materials, design. Um, and all this is sort of, yeah, based on like a year, years of um years of operational um experience, our public works preferences and and, you know, some of our our operations setups. Um, notably the stormwater section, uh, which is not prescribed by by any uh government at this time, uh, we did add in some climate resiliency. So um, basically, this is the, this adds for, it's like future consideration for what what pipe sizes might need to account for uh additional capacity in the stormwater ponds uh and things like that to to account for sort of maybe some of the more severe storms we might get, et cetera. So um, and that stuff, we um, we consulted both with the external consultants that work for the developers. Um, because, you know, they they work in other municipalities, so they're they're seeing it. Um, but we also uh used a a a stormwater consultant. So um, all of that was uh pretty well received, I think. So um, not a lot on the sanitary sewer side, so most of that's prescribed by like the MECP, our our sewer works by law. Our new uh CLICA that we're operating under and it's mo- you know, it's collection, so it's mostly just pipe design. Uh, we have some materials specifications that are um, we 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 have a preference for, but they're they're generally pretty standard amongst uh most municipalities. Um, other than that, it's sort of OPSD and OPSS. Um, but any of those preferences is is what's covered in the guidelines. Uh, water supply, so that's always a fun topic, but uh uh, th- these are pretty established by a lot of existing li- legislation, as you're aware. So um, the the water section in our guidelines is quite extensive. Um, it covers a lot of material specifications. Sort of, you know, the the way we like to see it in the road allowance, et cetera. Um, and the guidelines also include um sort of how we connect to the individual lots. So there's details for that. Uh, so, you know, that's where it interacts with the building code. Um, uh, and then we also include in the appendix sort of the most recurrent version uh of our water main commissioning guidelines, which is um uh very important for for all the contractors to follow, obviously, when we when we put, bring new water mains online. Uh, roadworks, uh less legislative and more more like guidelines. So there's um generally like road um road geometry, et ceteras, um covered under like, it's called the TAC guidelines, to some extent, maybe MTO guidelines, um, OPSS, OPSD. So that's all that just the provincial, uh, again, their guidelines, they can all be modified. Uh, a lot of those uh to sort of suit preferences, but they are provided as like a baseline. Um, we, you know, the the guidelines themselves um for us uh ge- generally includes sort of, you know, some specific road geometry requirements. Um, a lot of pedestrian requirements. And then obviously, in the detail sections, we get into uh cross-sections, uh, which is what we're going to talk about next. So that's usually when when uh when we get like draft plan and detailed plan applications, um, one of the more sort of the the bigger things you see on all the plans is is the the road allowances and and those are, those are and have been for a long time. Fairly specific to most municipalities, everyone sort of has their own, their own preferences as to how they look. So we, ours have been, they've been modified a little bit over the years, um, sort of year by year. But uh, we did a bit more of a comprehensive update on them this time to to align with um sort of current operational needs. Um, current like staff feedback on some of the layout, like trees, et cetera. Um, and as well, um, uh, some road width concerns. Um, because we, we, a few years back, the roads were all narrowed to eight meters. And I think we were starting to see some operational uh concerns with like on-street parking um as it relates to like winter maintenance and EMS access. So um, starting with the the twenty meter lot, um, not a lot of major changes. We did um, the, we we sort of swapped the sidewalk around a little bit to to actually improve parking for lots and get uh, reduce the opportunity for people to be parking between the curb and the sidewalks, which is uh was kind of a bit of an issue, especially for winter control, I think. Um, but it also provides a little bit more space. Um, even though it's on public property, there's a bit more space behind the sidewalk for for parking there. Not a lot else in this one. We tweaked some of the, the utility trench layout and the, the pipes have been tweaked around a little bit just to, to provide less traffic over the actual manholes and whatnot. So hopefully help with longevity a bit there. The big new, the big news here is for a couple of years now, some of the feedback we've been hearing from developers has been regarding shrinking our right of ways. And, and there's been a bit of reluctance to do it. So this, this time around, when we started consultations, talking to the consultants and the developers, the, the request was for, for an 18-meter right of way. That seems to be what is becoming more common. So we, the, we consulted with a municipal, like engineers, development group, which is sort of represents a wide swath of communities across Ontario about a few different cross-section options. And, and what sort of came back out of that was an 18.5 meter right of ways is pre-common. So what you see here is it's actually pretty similar to our 20-meter. But what we did was chop a, chop a meter and a half out of the, the left side of it and keep most of the infrastructure on the right side untouched. So it really should have minimal impact on operations. Public Works was pretty happy with it. Obviously we, we sort of sat down, went over this with them. But largely it's actually quite similar to our, to our 20-meter and should be a good improvement and provide for some, some denser development. And also just more road layout options when, when they go to design. One of the other big news, and this, this was sort of an item that came out of the secondary plan, was sort of creating a bit more of a split between our minor and major collector roads. So until recently, like we, we've had a few different collector cross-sections, but they've sort of always been on a one-off basis when, when a new developments come in. Generally, the, what, what you, what we need to have happen is what, as roads have larger volumes, you want to reduce sort of the, the residential accesses more and more as the volumes go up. Is it, you know, reduces conflict between pedestrians and, and traffic. So the easiest way we, we've found, other municipalities have started doing is, is splitting them up. So it also gives the opportunity to sort of create another tier of road that's maybe not as expensive to build, smaller right of ways. Again, in the expectation of, of lower traffic. So the, the proposed minor is going to be a 23-meter right of way with certain potential to, to reduce it to even a 20-meter. This, the, the intent here is for larger residential lots or, or some higher density housing types. An example of sort of where this might already exist in township would be Windermere Boulevard. So it's sort of a wider, still a wider boulevard, larger, those are like 14-meter-ish building lots. And then the major collector is going to be a 26-meter right of way. That's going to be like your, your west end of Amherst Drive, where you're seeing more like higher density development, some commercial stuff. Expectation is for higher traffic volumes. And the, the intent would be to restrict access to, to, to those and no single-family homes. So these are the, the two of them. This would be the minor. I guess sidewalk on both sides, fairly wide asphalt. So you're, you're almost nine meters of asphalt. So it's a little bit more than your local. Sidewalks are pretty well set back from the asphalts for a little bit of pedestrian safety. The pipe layouts are quite common between all of them. Still have your street trees. So not, not too much different there. When we get into our, the major, so the proposed major is kind of intended to work in sort of commercial areas as well. So it's still providing your, your standard driving lanes, but it's also has dedicated parking lanes. So two, 2.7 meter parking lanes on either side. So it looks like a wide asphalt section, but only the, the driving lanes are a portion of that. Still, still walkways on both sides. The intent would be to, where, where intended in the, the rec master plan would be to have a multi-use path on one side. So it's, it's provides for a wider right of way for that. Other major differences are really just like asphalt thicknesses for, for heavier duty traffic flows. There's another section, so the other section in the guidelines there is going to be traffic calming. So we've kind of just got general measures in at the moment. There is a pilot study, as you're aware, in Amherst U right now, that, that's evaluating some different ones. Once that pilot's complete, the intent would be to, to update the guidelines with, with preferred types and eliminate maybe some of the ones that didn't work so well and not have them in there. So. So we also have sections on sort of lot, lot drainage, ground cover. There's a lot of really well-established details for these. So the, the section provides a fairly extensive lists of sort of what the requirements are for lock rating and water drainage on the individual lots, as well as within township dome blocks. A lot of these, they just have to conform to Stormwater Management Report. It sort of interacts a little bit with the, the building code in terms of drainage and, and apron heights and things like that. And like I said, we have a lot of details with like specific, like planned views of like how lots need to be laid out, which way the water goes, minimum fall and, and the sort. Rosion sediment control. Generally, there's a lot of best practice guides out there. It is a requirement of any development application, obviously to mitigate any downstream damage. So we've just got a section there. We did add a parkland section. So this is going to, this is going to go along with sort of future urban design guidelines. The primary focus of this section was more on like the technical construction of it. So you're going to see path cross-sections, lighting standards, an approved tree list, which has a preference for native species as well as, as well as like, you know, assumption inspection requirements. So like our playground inspections and so on and so forth. So it's all out in the open during design. There is no section on external utilities. These, these are always a part of the composite plan that's included with the design and sign-offs provided by those utilities. However, sort of our, our, our cross-sections show where those all go. So streetlights, joint utility trench, et cetera, all the, the above-ground infrastructure for them. These are examples, some of the, some of the park details and lighting details. Accessible benches, singles and doubles, and then trail cross-sections just to, just so we can get these all out in drawings. So anyways, that's, that's sort of the general, general makeup of it. There's quite an extensive detail list and the, you know, the plan is to review these annually, both internally with staff, sort of what works, what doesn't, as well as, you know, we're always in constant feedback with developers. So, you know, it'll be sort of in, in consultation with industry. Questions?
Thank you. Their detailed presentation and detailed report. I'll turn to the committee.
I'll start us off then. So I, I was, I was interested in the trees, which maybe isn't surprising to some. So in the comments from the developers, obviously the comments aren't necessarily all that specific or don't have a lot of context. So on the one, the one comment there was for trees said, review for non-native species. I'm curious what that developer, if it was a particular developer, what, what they meant by that. If you can recall, I know, I know it's getting into the weeds, but I have a supplementary question that might be informed by that.
Okay, that's fair. Yeah, I, I think, I'm not sure if the, the, the original version that they, the, the first draft that they were commenting on, didn't highlight the native speakers, yeah, the native species in the list, I think boldly enough. So there are non-native species in the list, sort of with some of our consultation, there was a a preference to, to keep other options in there. So that was, that was sort of the, one of the changes we made in the final draft was to, to bold the, the native species as a, as a preference.
So. Okay, so it does kind of inform my, my secondary question then, which is really there. Like I couldn't think in my own head why there'd be any resistance from developers to plant native trees. Am I right in saying that there wouldn't be?
No, I, I don't think so. And, and I'm not sure if it's a preference of the, you know, the, the individual landscape designer, you know, they're getting, you know, landscape architects to, to do the plans. And maybe they have a preference for some non, non-native species from a, an aesthetic point of view. But yeah, it's, it's good to see it. It's good to see a variety, but it's also, you know, I think preferable to use native species when you can.
No, I agree. I'm, I'm glad that the preferable's in there. Thank you. Counsel Willis.
I'm glad to see the shortening of the space between the sidewalk and the street. Cause as I was driving around yesterday, I noticed a lot of pickup trucks with their back ends out in the middle of the street. We, when we're talking about traffic calming, one of the things that causes the problem with excessive speed is straightaway streets. So is that, I didn't read every word. Is that included in the traffic calming to not have long straight streets that encourage speeding?
Yes, one of the, one of the additions to, to the guidelines that, that we haven't had in a, in a township guideline was a maximum length of blocks between turns. So I think, I think we've set it at 200, 250 meters. And, and that doesn't mean you don't necessarily need traffic calming even then. But it's, you know, it depends on the intersection treatment and stop sign location, whether using, you know, roundabouts could become a feature there as well to, to slow people down. But yeah, it's, but that, that is the intent. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. This very detailed report and document. Thank goodness that, that's my, that's my thing. I just had a question about storm water management. Some of the newer technologies kind of intrigue me. And I was looking in the, in the document for that area. Is that under the LIDs? Because, and I got, I didn't go to, it has general statements and then it refers to other documents like City of Toronto and the different conservations and things like that. So is that sort of where that would fall under, where the new technologies for like under-parking lot, storm retention and things like that?
Like is that where they would fall?
Is that where it would fall in the, in the document is like under LIDs or?
Yeah, there, yeah.
Or, or were they, were, were they a part of the thought process?
So you're, you're starting to see the under-parking lot installations almost as more of a standard and not even as much of an LID. But what, they, they do have the benefit of they infiltrate, when built correctly, they infiltrate into the ground, which effectively makes them an LID. Cause the, then one of the other things with stormwater, modern stormwater management is they want to see more infiltration back into the ground and less just shoving it through a pond. So yeah, they're, they're one of the common ones we see. Yep.
Thank you. I was looking in the right spot then, and it just didn't, the infiltration intrigues me. And in fact, at FCM, I went on one of the tours and that, it was about stormwater management and saw some of their parking areas where they've clearly reduced the runoff through the infiltration. And stats aren't there yet to prove how much, but it's pretty significant what can be done. So that's good.
Yeah, and there's a few of them as well, already installed.
Yeah, LIDs are something that the township is required to look at through R ECA from the MECP. However, the, the catch in the township is the, the below-grade conditions with clay, which doesn't infiltrate and rock, which doesn't infiltrate, make them hard to install. I think we're finding them a lot more practicable on site plans, which this, the guidelines doesn't cover. Whereas in subdivisions with roads and things like that, developers aren't looking to construct a buried chamber on an additional lot or something like that. They're finding more conventional methods to be preferred. We're still looking at that, but generally the infiltration capacity is, is pretty minimal in the township. But that is reviewed with every draft plan through the HOG report.
Very good, thank you.
Other questions from the committee? Well? Yes? Mr. Mayor?
Okay, make sure I got the right report. I would move that the report from the Engineering Environment Division dated June 10th, 2025, redraft subdivision engineering technical guidelines be received and that council endorse the draft subdivision engineering technical guidelines.
So moved, seconded by Counselor Willis. Any comments from the mover?
Just, like I said, it's pretty, I mean, an amazing document. And I guess just following on Counselor Willis's comments of the last item, the amount of work that has been presented this evening in just these two, just during committee of the whole is phenomenal, let alone the rest of the work that's been presented. These are big checkmarks for the township. So kudos to staff, everybody that's involved. I know they're all team efforts. There are leads that keep the project moving and to everybody involved, it's pretty amazing what we're turning out. So thank you very much.
Seconder? Anyone else? Call the question, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you to the presenters. And I take a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole. Counsel Proderick, seconded by Counselor Willis, all those in favor? Motion is carried. We adjourn committee of the whole at 8:16.
Okay, so back in the council meeting. And the first up is notice of motion. Are there any notices of motion for this evening? None? Direct motions? Are there any direct motions presented this evening? None? They have the consent agenda with one item. So I guess we don't need to extract anything. Do I have a mover? Counsel Proderick.
I would move that the items in the consent agenda dated June 10th, 2025 be approved as presented and necessary action be taken.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Parks. Any comments from the mover? Seconder? Other members? Call the question, all in favor? Motion is passed. Announcements? Are there any announcements this evening? Counsel, sorry. Very young.
Thank you, your worship. I was going to say worship or zee, but I wouldn't say that to you. And I just want to send some thanks to the staff and community groups who were involved in the senior expo, which I attended. And as a result, I spent two hours Monday morning wood carving with the Kingston Seniors Center and the program offered with the township. It was so good, I'm going back. And I was really impressed that it was accessible, which sort of fits to the earlier discussions. Went to the culture talk last night, got some really good information on the train station in Innes Town. So I'm going to be sharing that with people. I want to congratulate Annie, Annie Newman of Amherst U, who won a bronze at the Canadian Wrestling Championships. And Ashton McCullough, whose parents live in Millhaven. I don't know if he's still living there, but he's an MSU student who graduated this year and he missed the Canadian Open and missed the cut by one shot. So, and the last one is, I really want to give a shout out to Loyalist Township Minor Hockey, who have created a $500 bursary for any player in their organization who's going on to community college or secondary school. I think that's a great way to recognize kids.
Thank you. Any other announcements this evening? Counsel Willis.
Just want to thank staff and members of the community that came out to the recent town halls that were held in five communities. The, the discussions were robust and, and it was really nice to see the number of people coming out, increasing each time we do them.
Thank you. Any other announcements this evening? I just had one, I attended the United Church of Canada Celebration for their 100th anniversary on Sunday in Bath, at the Bath United Church, which coincidentally on Sunday in Bath, at the Bath United Church, which coincidentally, last year was a hundred and seventy fifth anniversary for that church. So pretty longstanding in the community, but it was, it was a good well attended ceremony and I appreciated it being able to attend and take part in it and quite a, quite an achievement for establishment to last a hundred years. So. So if there's none other, we'll move on. The next is confirmatory bylaw. Do I have a mover? Deputy Mayor.
Seems to be a tradition. I move that bylaw twenty twenty five dash forty three to confirm the proceedings of council of Loyalist Township be enacted and passed and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign and seal.
So moved, seconded by Counselor Ennis. All in favor? Motion is carried and a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Willis, seconded by Counselor Boobik. All in favor? Motion is passed.